Thank you. Tom, would you take your role, please?
Pleasure. Chairperson Fox?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mitchell?
Here.
Secretary Murphy is here. Trustee McMullin?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Ekman?
Here.
All right, thank you. Item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support?
Motion from McMullin, second from Murphy. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Next up, approval of meeting minutes.
So moved. Support.
Motion from Ekman, second from Mitchell. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no motion carries. Item six, call of the public. If you're here for item 7A, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. So now would be the opportunity for anything but item 7A. Anyone? All right, we'll close call of the public. We'll move on to 7A, which is a public hearing. This is for site plan PD application 25-004, Sawyer Ridge, a residential plan development. And we are at the preliminary site plan review phase of the process. To give you an idea how we're going to run the meeting tonight, in a moment, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll turn the meeting over to our township planner, who will introduce the project. We'll then have the applicant come up and give their comments and anything that they would like to say. They'll return to their seat. After they return to the seat, then the meeting becomes yours. And that's the opportunity. You have to come forward, state your name, address, give us any comments you'd like. You will not have interaction going back on, but you'll see us doing some note-taking. If there are questions that need to be answered, we'll do our best to get those for you this evening. After we're done with the public comments, we'll close the public hearing. And then we have a staff review letter that we're going to go through between the applicant, the township planner, and ourselves to cover and discuss the project in more detail. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing at 7:03 PM for the applicant, David Straub, parcel ID number 4708262007. The applicant proposes an approximate 71.1 acre development with 172 single-family homes. The parcel is ZonCA Conservation Agricultural and future land use designated as a special planning area. And for the record, all public notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. So there, I've done the first step. The second step now is to turn the meeting over to our planner, Troy Langer.
Thank you. I'll try to start out by just explaining where this is located. This is a zoning map of Heartland Township with US Highway 23 in this location, running north and south. And then this is Highway M59 running east and west. And from this intersection, going east on M59 to Pleasant Valley Road at that intersection, this is the approximate 71-acre piece that is under consideration for tonight. So this is where that's located, south side of M59, west of Pleasant Valley. And let me pull up a site plan of the project. Yeah, I'll go with this. This is a phasing map. But now, you have to work with me because we're tilted on the side here. So 59 is actually on this side, and then Pleasant Valley would be at the top. So it's tilted to the side. But this is the proposed development. It is a single-family residential subdivision, 172 units, single-family homes. It has essentially a road pattern with a connecting road from M59 that would extend south all the way down to a cul-de-sac, some internal roads. It connects to a subdivision that is to the west that has been approved but hasn't started construction. That is Highland Reserve to the west. And then it also has a connection to Pleasant Valley out in this location here. And this is kind of the general layout of that subdivision, 172 homes. The applicant is applying for the planned development, so they're going through that process. And in general, that's a three-step process with the first step being conceptual review. This was in front of the Planning Commission as well as Township Board. When this initially came to the Planning Commission, there was a single-family subdivision. And then in the northern portion, there were proposed attached units, possibly apartments. And ultimately, they modified that plan, came back with a slightly different conceptual plan that just had just single families. So they got rid of all of the apartments and slightly different layout. So it has been in front of the Planning Commission for conceptual review as well as the Township Board. And the next step of that is the preliminary plan review, which is a public hearing, which is this step tonight. And at this point, the Planning Commission will actually make a formal recommendation on this, which will then be sent to the Township Board. The Township Board will make a formal decision on the preliminary plan. And then the next step after that will be the final plan development phase, which at that point, we're pretty much done with the site plans unless there's some component that they have to amend to bring back as part of that final PD. At that point, we'll be looking at the master deed, be looking at the plan development agreement, any easements. Any administrative legal documents are always part of that final PD. That'll come to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation on it. It will then go to our Township Board. The Township Board will make a final decision on it. And then also at that point, the Township Board would be rezoning this property from its current zoning of CA Conservation Agricultural to PD Plan Development. So that is a quick overview of where this is located, a quick overview of the project itself, and then a quick overview of the process that we're looking at. And with that, I'll just be available to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Troy. So that completes step number two of tonight's meeting in this application. Number three is to ask the applicant or any representatives they have to come forward and give any presentation, any discussion you'd like to have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is David Straub. I'm with MI Homes, and I'm super excited to be here. I've sat before you folks wearing different hats over the years. Previously have represented another developer that was going to bring this community forward, and that didn't happen. And I'm super happy to be back representing the same parcel I'm passionate about it with MI Homes. I'd like to start by just giving, you know, kind of a brief background of who we are. MI Homes, we were founded in 1976. We're based out of Columbus, Ohio. We've been here in Metro Detroit now for the last six years. Publicly traded on New York Stock Exchange, and we're the 13th largest builder in the U.S. We've built over 150,000 homes since our company's inception, 9,000 homes last year. Here in Metro Detroit, we're in the top three. We're right behind Lombardo and Polty Homes. We're super happy to be part of Metro Detroit and very excited to bring this community to fruition here in the corner of M59 and Pleasant Valley. As I said, one of the nation's leading home builders. We're in 17 markets in the United States, from Texas east to the Carolinas and as far north as Minnesota. What is important to us when we are developing communities is to be thoughtful in our community design. We have an emphasis on... I'm sorry, I'm working my laptop and not working the screen at the same time. My apologies. We like to emphasize walkability, connectivity, and activated open spaces. It's super important for us to preserve natural features, elegantly landscaped entrances, green space buffers, green space within the community, and preserving as much open space as we can is super important to us. Housing mix for a range of profiles, range of buyer profiles and price points is important. I think what you'll see with our community here is we're going after attainably priced homes that are right for the market today. Square footages for the homes that we're preparing to bring to market here, between 1,957 square feet and 2,600 square feet. In our streetscapes, we like to make sure that we control the curb appeal. We do a similar dissimilar elevation separation between our homes. We're focused on exterior color packages. We really want to enhance that streetscape by, you know, by controlling that from our sales office, controlling the homes we sell, where we sell them, and to make sure that there's adequate separation so it's not the same home repeating and repeating and repeating through the community. Thoughtful land planning. Here's an example of a couple of our communities here in Metro Detroit. We have Andalina Farms in Celine, and Trailside Meadow in White Lake. And then thoughtful entryways and monumentation. We want to make sure that the doorway to our community is tasteful. It provides a, just kind of a clean roadmap and a placemat for people to come home and enjoy their homes in our communities. We want this to be a focus for not only the community people are driving into, but for the entire community to be proud of. That would include here in Heartland Township. I want to talk briefly about where we were last fall. So last fall, when we came before you for our concept plan, our planner presented 167 units. There were wetland impacts that we had designed through, and there was a little less open space. We've had an opportunity to work with our engineer, Seaver Keast, and we believe that we've come up with a thoughtful design. You'll see that the entrance off of M59 was moved further west from where it was previously. Previously, the entrance to the community was right up against the seven-acre corner parcel. And it was moved primarily from feedback from the folks at MDOT. I'm happy they did that because I think now it gives us a nice buffer between us and the corner for whatever that might be in the future. And it gives nice separation from the entrance of our neighborhood to Pleasant Valley Road. We have now preserved more wetlands than we did previously. We've preserved more natural features and more open space as well. We have 38% open space preserved for the community. That's well over 26 acres. Just quick comparison between where we were and where we are today, and also what's required. So permitted for this property is up to 282 units or four dwelling units per acre. We have a site plan in front of you tonight with 172 units. That's 2.42 units per acre. The required open space is 25% or 17 acres. And as I stated a few minutes ago, what we're providing is 38% open space, just over 26 acres. When we were before you back in the fall, one of the things that we were asked to focus on is preservation of natural features and preservation of trees, in particular, the landmark trees along Pleasant Valley Road. We've made an effort to save those trees and to, again, focus on critical areas within the community, minimizing wetland impacts and maximizing open space and preserving those features. Landscaping and activated open space. So we have enhanced green belts, buffers, walking paths, and park space within the open spaces. I know that, you know, from my long history here in the township, that, you know, the green belt along M59 is super important. We want to make sure that there's adequate and enhanced landscaping up there. And we think that we've accomplished that with the plan that we have before you this evening. Next is just, you know, just a sampling of what will be in our park space. We have walking paths throughout the community where there'll be benches for people to rest, and then a play area where, you know, where families and children can meet and work out some of their energy before the parents put them to bed. Through the process, through our application process, you know, the reviewing bodies have come back and provided some reasonable and meaningful comments on our preliminary design. Some of the things that I wanted to point out is that there are 320 sewer REUs allocated to this property, and we intend to use 172 for this development. Engineering review was conditionally approved through the preliminary review. So those conditions are really tied to the engineering, the detailed engineering that would be the next step after Township Board. One of the questions that came up in the engineering review was the, I guess, really to make sure that our detention ponds are adequately sized. And in speaking with our engineer, they absolutely are, but that, you know, will, you know, the rubber hits the road on that once we get into the detailed engineering part of the process. Landscape review, Pleasant Valley Green Belt, of course. We know that's important. There was some fine tuning we needed to do to get the plan ready to come in for this evening. We've done that and think that we either meet or exceed the green belt ordinance. South property line, I've had the pleasure of sitting down with our neighbors to the south, the Giggler Farms family, listened to them when we were here last fall, their concerns with the farming operation, and wanted to make sure that, you know, that we understand what the, you know, what a farming operation means and the impact that it could have on our families. And, you know, we've, we also met with the folks from Levy, who are operating the aggregate facility across Pleasant Valley Road. We actually met with them together. And I think we have a meeting of the minds that we, you know, we need to be good neighbors. We need to understand that there's a trucking operation that works from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and a farming operation that works 24/7. So the importance of MI Homes as a representative of the community and as a conduit to folks that are going to be living here in the future is to ensure that we're fully open and transparent and disclose any of these operations that are happening in our vicinity. So you folks don't get the call if the, you know, the four months out of the year when the Giggler Farms is heating their grain, I don't know if that's what you call it, but I believe that's what it's called, when they're heating that grain and those heaters are working 24 hours a day, or at 7:00 AM when trucks start to line up to pull into Pleasant Valley. So it's going to be important for us to work with prospective purchasers, work with homeowners to ensure that they understand that these are our neighbors, they were here before us, and let's, you know, let's all get along. Here are some examples of the homes that we intend to offer here. Again, as I stated earlier, these home designs are between 1,957 and 2,600 square feet, two-story homes, three to four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. And here's just some examples of our model homes, some of those finishes. And last but not least, because I probably said more than I need to, thank you so much. Again, I'm super excited to be here on behalf of MI Homes. And we are excited to finally turn this corner into something special. I think that as a township, you've been talking about this corner for close to 25 years, if not longer. And we are confident and happy that we have an opportunity to stand before you and bring this forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now, Mr. Straub is going to return to his seat in the audience. And now, we're at step three. This is your opportunity, if you'd like to make any comments, come on forward to the mic, give us your name, address, and any comments, and we will record them and see what we can do. So if you're so inclined, come on up. Okay, we will close... Whoops. Whoops. Oh, you gotta come up.
Is the call called, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Correct. You're fine. You're fine. I was like...
Sorry, I was dreaming. My name's Joe Ricardin. I live down the street on Pleasant Valley, or soon to be, at 655. I got, come from this room, wearing a couple of different hats, for one thing. I know Mr. Straub, worked with him. I met Mr. Straub 28 years ago. When it comes to the plan and the community and stuff that he's talking, I mean, he's, for lack of better terms, probably one of the better people in the business that we've known. So I take some satisfaction with that, that he's here. He doesn't get very excited very easy, so this is pretty good for him. One of my main concerns is like so many other people here, maybe it is or a concern or not, the road upgrades. What's going to transpire with Pleasant Valley, the intersection, the crossover 59? I've got two young kids. One's going to be in high school this year, and one's not far behind them. In the morning, the night, it's a nightmare. There's accidents once a week. Before any plan approval would happen, I'm just making that recommendation. Pleasant Valley Road has to get paved. There has to be something done with the intersection. There's too much traffic right now. And with this plan that I see here, people cutting out headed south to I-96, and then trying to cross, play leapfrog, going north on Fenton Road is going to be a major problem. Because I'm there four times a day, twice in the morning, twice in the night. And it's bad. It's really bad. Even when the sun comes down, you can't see coming westbound. That is an issue. You asked a question on a PUD, right? The rationale behind a PUD is how does it benefit neighbors in the community? This doesn't benefit me or anybody on Pleasant Valley until the upgrades are made on the road and at least made safe for all the residents that travel up down that road because it is a thoroughfare. A question, what happens to the REU balance from 172 to 269? Maybe you can answer that or not. I don't know. What happens to that balance?
Do you want me... No, no.
And then, the old plan was 169 units. Now it's 172. So we're not decreasing units, but 282 are approved on the site if there was no wetlands. So there is wetland, so that's why that reduction. If there was no wetlands, they'd be asking for 282 units. So just a couple of things to keep in mind there that take into consideration, please. And like I said, I'm in development as well. Obviously, something's going to happen. Just make sure it's done the right way. My four, my major concern is the road traffic. What's going to happen? That's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Last call? Okay. We're going to close the public comments. We're also going to close the public hearing at 7:26 PM. And we're going to invite Mr. Straub to come on back up. And we're going to do the last step of this particular applicant this evening. Have seat. We're going to take the staff review letter that we have dated June 5th, and we're going to have a discussion between Mr. Straub, our planning director, and the Planning Commission. And we use the staff letter to give us an outline so we make sure we cover many of the points or the points that need to be covered. And I am going to begin on page five, which would be packet page 17. As Troy mentioned, through the PD process, there are different steps and different things to take a look at. This is a little bit more detailed approach or detailed step. And about a third of the way down, you guys see eligibility criteria. To be eligible for a PD, there are five type items that we take a look at. And the first one is recognizable benefits. The applicant has provided a letter dated May 21st, 2025. Are there any questions or comments on that for him? Everybody good down there? Okay. Minimum size for a PD is stated at 20 acres, and they are approximately 71.1. Use of public services shall not be unreasonable. And we have MDOT, of course, in charge of the M59. We have Livingston County Road Commission in charge of the Pleasant Valley Road. We have a bunch of private roads within the development. Now flipping to page six, there was a little discussion in the presentation on density, but I think we're going to cover that in detail in a later step this evening. Compatibility with the comprehensive plan. This is a special planning area. It would appear as though they're following the needs of a special, the requirements of a special planning area. Any comments on that? You have the mix of housing, the walkability, those types of things. Would there be any comments on that? Okay, and unified control. They will be under, the property will be under single ownership. The next phase or the next step we have to look at is plan development design standards. There are 11 items to take a peek at here. One is the permitted uses in the special planning area. Housing is a permitted use, and a variety of housing is desired, so they would be complying there. And now, we're going to pick up the residential density a little bit more and ask Troy if he could help us out here.
Yeah, so the property is about 71 acres. And the way you calculate the density is you have to defer to the future land use map designation and what that density outlines. In this case, the future land use map designation for this is special planning area, and it allows up to four dwelling units an acre. And then this just becomes simple math of 71.1 at four units an acre, and you come up with 282. Now, what we didn't point out is that in addition to that, if you are a planned development, you also have a provision that allows for a bonus density of up to 40% you also have a provision that allows for a bonus density of up to 40% beyond what that future land use plan designation is. And that permits up to an additional 113 more units, bringing it up to potentially 395 units. Now, that bonus density does require determination by the planning commission and the board that this project is worthy of that bonus density. But theoretically, that is 395 units. This is proposed at 172.
And just to answer a comment out in the audience, or during call to the public, we've seen plans and drawings with more than 300 units on this parcel. The way they accommodate that is they go up and they rent them. So it could be done, and we do not challenge you to show us how to do that. We know it could be done. We're thankful that we have another option in front of us. Design details, Troy, you want to touch on that for us?
So I think Mr. Straub somewhat showed you already. I'll try to briefly show you. They are all single-family homes. I'm going to try to just, I'm just picking one here. I'm not trying to, there's nothing particular about this, but as you can see, this is an example of what these homes look like, generally in planned developments that are single-family homes. The planning commission and the board don't dictate too much on the design and/or architectural elements of it, but they are showing us what their homes might look like. They have five or six home designs in there that you can look at, different floor plans and different front facades. And then he mentioned, Mr. Straub mentioned, they try to differentiate, so you don't have the same house three in a row, so to speak, that they try to do different things with these roof lines over here, over here, and then colors, so that they look different, even though it might be a similar home next to each other, that there would be things different about it to give it distinctive looks.
And I noticed in your packet, you do things like the shakes look, or the homeowner would have the option of adding some brick or stone or those types of things that are all going to make them look different in a certain way.
Right. Yeah. Right now, we have five different home plans. Each of those home plans has four different elevations, and then we have multiple exterior color schemes as well. Those elevations and color schemes vary the amount of masonry or siding on the exterior of the homes, window configurations, roof lines, et cetera. We do a very good job at ensuring that there's adequate separation between homes. So again, you're not driving down, you know, thinking you're looking at the same home over and over again.
Okay. Any questions on that, comments? Okay. Minimum yard requirements. Troy, you want to touch on that for us?
Okay, there's a couple of items to touch on. Getting back to this, there's an 80-foot setback from M-59, or I'm sorry, 50-foot setback in there, at least 80 feet away up here. So they comply up there. And as we get over to Pleasant Valley, there's required 50-foot setback. They are a little bit closer in some areas here, as well as at the southern area down here, they would be at 30 feet. And then inside of the development, typically where it is adjacent to a road for the rear yard, we would typically have a 40-foot. They're proposing the 20-foot setback. And then the front, again, 40-foot might be typical, but they're proposing 25-foot front setback. So one of the items in the front, for example, that comes up a lot, is the ability to park a vehicle on the driveway in front of the garage and not have a vehicle blocking a sidewalk. The sidewalks are one foot inside of the right-of-way, so they would be approximately 26 feet from the garage. So in theory, there's enough room there to park a vehicle on the driveway and not block the sidewalk. Now, some people still end up blocking it, but that's, there's theoretically enough room to do that.
Okay. Any comments on that? Everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Troy, distance between buildings, you might as well, while your voice is all warmed up.
Yep. So on this one, there, yeah, in addition to the things we talked about, roof lines and colors, the applicant has a third stall garage option. And when that option is deployed, the homes might be located as close as five feet to a property line. Now, I don't think the applicant knows how many are going to do third stall garage options, but theoretically, you should be prepared on the planning commission that if you have somebody that does a third stall garage, and a neighbor does a third stall garage, hypothetically, those two homes, each being five feet off of the property line, could be 10 feet apart. And then in that instance, if we had that situation occur, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to have those building elevations where they are separated 10 feet. He would upgrade the building materials on his structures for better fire protection. They'd be an upgraded building material, just in those instances where they are 10 feet apart.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, question. So based upon Christ's description of the homes being three-car garages, you would make sure that the adjoining walls were Class 1 fire. So do you select particular lots that you would predominantly mark out for three-car garage units? Or is the entire development capable of having three-car garages?
So three-car garages would be an option for future homeowners to choose, and we would allow those folks to make those selections if that home site was able to accommodate that option. So we don't pick particular lots within the community, but if we do something, it's called a lot fit matrix. And our lot fit matrix picks all of our base floor plans and base home plans and the options available to those, and then would allow our sales folks to work with prospective buyers on what options they would like to invest in their home. So it could, theoretically, it could, there could be three-car garages on every home within the community. Practically, I'd say in communities that are like this, you know, the option purchase for an option like that, it probably lands somewhere between 25 and 30% of the home sites would include that.
Okay. So what I'm trying to work down to is, I'm a prospective home buyer. I have selected my home with a three-car garage. So on my parcel, my property, I'm going to have only five-yard side, yard setback. And there's no other home around me currently. When the next person comes along, so would my, I'll ask it this way, would my home with the garage, three-car garage, have this upgraded fire rating?
I hear exactly what you're saying. I think you make a good point that when we, if somebody does choose that three-car garage option, that the fire rating should be applied to that unit. And I can, I'll make a note this evening and make sure that the Class 1 materials are applied to these homes when that option's chosen, because if Mr. and Mrs. Smith purchase on Home Site 25, and Home Site Number 24 doesn't get picked until after they've been living in their home for six months, and they want a three-car garage as well, we need to make sure that there's adequate separation.
Okay. Very good.
I hear you.
Okay. Everybody good with that one?
I think I want to comment. So is it, if it is a garage that Commissioner Mitchell was making reference to, but the, it's only the garage wall that is five feet within the boundary line, and the balance of the house is eight feet or 12 feet, did those walls also get the Class 1 building construction, or only the wall that is within five feet?
It would be only the wall that's within that, you know, anything that's, anything that's 10 feet or closer would have the Class 1 material.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Building height, maximum 35 feet, highly unlikely at a two-story residential home, but that is a commercial standard. Parking and loading, we just talked about two- and three-car garages. Troy had mentioned the adequate distance from the garage to the sidewalk. Parking vehicles, if parked properly, will not hang into the sidewalk. I'm moving on up to page 10. We do have a landscaping discussion coming a little later, so we're going to slide by number eight. And let's touch on open space. Troy, could you help us out there?
Yeah. So plan developments are required to provide open space. 25% of the site is required to be open space, as the applicant has mentioned. They're at 38.2% of their site is open space. And then in addition, the plan development requirements state a minimum of 10% shall be dedicated as usable open space. And they are at 17.09% of the site is usable open space.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Yep.
All right. Natural features. Troy, you might as well touch on those while you're at it.
Yeah. I'm going to switch to a different, I'm going to, I'm going to use this, this sheet here. Again, let me just make sure the bearings of how this lays out, because the site is sideways here. So M-59 would be on this side of the property, and Pleasant Valley would be at the top of the property. And this site doesn't show any of the development, it's just kind of a vacant site. But what it does show is the regulated wetlands. So you can see in this area here is, well, I should start out, there are six wetlands. The applicant has had an environmental assessment performed on this property. There are six wetlands on this property. Three of them are regulated, three of them would not be regulated. So I'm just going to touch briefly on the regulated wetlands. And so you can see in this blue dot shading, a, one of the regulated wetlands. And then at the southern end here is another regulated wetland. And then over here is a third regulated wetland on the site. And then in addition, this plan identifies some of the significant trees that they are attempting to save. They had mentioned Pleasant Valley, but there are some trees on their western boundary that they're attempting to save as well. So with that, I'll just be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Moving on over to page 11, up at the top, sidewalks and pedestrian walkways. You had mentioned in your presentation, Mr. Straub, that that walkability is important to you. My understanding is there's a walk, a sidewalk on M-59 and one down Pleasant Valley?
There's one across the frontage on M-59. There's a sidewalk on the partial frontage on Pleasant Valley.
Of Pleasant Valley. And then sidewalks on both sides of the street throughout the development?
Sidewalks on both sides of the street and a pathway that'll meander through the open space.
Okay. Any comments on that? Wouldn't be a planning commission meeting without.
It wouldn't be right if I didn't bring up sidewalks, yeah. So a general question would be along M-59 and Pleasant Valley Road, where the seven-acre corner lot is, your sidewalks end, I am guessing, at the beginning of that property line?
Correct.
Yeah. So there'll be sidewalks just end at that point?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
About the trails behind the lots, in between the lots, what does that mean of?
We intended just have those be mowed pathways throughout the community, mowed and natural throughout the community.
That completes that section. Now, the requirements for preliminary review, here we get into a couple of things that people might call more traditional site plan type topics. And we have, I'm trying to remember how many there are of those, there are quite a few of them. So let's start with the first one, sewer and water. As you mentioned, you've been speaking with DPW, the site will need water and sewer, and it is available here. Troy, do you want to touch on stormwater drainage?
Yeah. So they have a, on this plan, an area where they're showing kind of a stormwater detention basin here. And the engineering consultant, Spalding De Decker, in their letter, had raised a question, and the applicant has discussed this in his presentation as well. We are not at a detailed engineering plan review stage, and our engineering consultants have questioned whether this storm detention basin would be of a sufficient size. And our engineering consultant has indicated, in the event this needs to be enlarged, there's the chance that some lots could be lost. And if, for example, they had to make it larger here, you can envision maybe some of those lots could be lost. The applicant has indicated in his presentation that seeing that letter, he chose to go to his engineer and say, hey, are you sure that these are going to be okay? His engineer assured him that, yeah, it should work. I guess I'm in the state of, well, I guess we'll find out once we get into the full engineering. I just think it's worthwhile to point out that some lots could be lost. Secondly, I think it's important to have this discussion. In the event that that happened, what happens? Well, if this becomes a modification to the site plan, typically this then has to come back to the planning commission to be approved. However, this is an opportune time for the planning commission to decide if that occurs and they lose lots. We don't want to see this come back as long as the street layout and everything is the same or reasonably close to the same. So the applicant wouldn't, if you desired, you could make those comments that if you felt that if that's all that's going to happen is some lots are going to be lost, and the street layout and sidewalks all remain the same, that they could proceed to construction engineering plan. So I'll just throw all of that out there and be available to answer any questions.
So can we just show a nod aheads, are you okay with what Troy has just stated? Basically, the plan stays the same, we lose a couple lots, you're okay, not coming back?
I mean, I know we all like meetings, but probably a couple meetings, yeah.
We need to talk now. Troy, that would be fine.
Well, if Mr. Straub is correct, and his engineer is correct, that it's a moot discussion, but I guess in the event we get into those engineered drawings and plans and we have to make adjustments, this would save you from having to reapply to come back here, if that helps, if that makes it clear to you as to what we just discussed here.
It does. It does. And, you know, I realize that once we get into detailed engineering plans, that things can change, and I appreciate the flexibility of planning. can change and I appreciate the flexibility of the planning commission.
Okay. Troy, I think I should back up on one real here quick. There was a question asked on what happens to the extra REUs. So can we back up to item one, which was sewer and water, and maybe you wanted to address that then?
Yeah, and I don't have a real good answer. Mr. Straub is not the owner of the property currently. This is, he's in negotiations to buy that, assuming he can get all of these approvals. The RE, the remaining REUs would be at the discretion of the owner. And then what that owner decides to do with them would be up to him, the owner, probably before this project proceeds on, the owner would have to decide what they want to do with them. In general, those REUs go with the property and they're stuck on the property and they cannot be transferred to adjacent properties unless that person owns at least a 25% interest. There's, there's all sorts of parameters. However, there is a settlement agreement with the owner that gives that particular owner the authority to sell REUs beyond just adjacent properties. So I don't know what the owner intends to do with those extra ones. That would fall to the owner's discretion and the authority that they have to move those REUs elsewhere.
Okay.
Does that help answer that?
Yep. Okay. Traffic impacts, Troy, you might as well touch on that. That was a question brought up or a comment brought up also.
Yeah, so you have in your packet, A, there was a very brief traffic study analysis that was done. And then also you have in your packet emails, one email from the Michigan Department of Transportation indicating that this access drive right here, is this Aspen Trail, that the location of this is satisfactory to MDOT. You also have an email as well as a driveway permit from the Livingston County Road Commission that this driveway or road connection to Pleasant Valley, the location of which is okay. However, both of these entities have said as part of their permitting, before they will allow construction of these roads to connect, there may be improvements inside of the M59 right of way or inside of the Pleasant Valley right of way that this applicant has to do. So before they can get permission to physically build those roads, they will have to get permits from those entities to connect. And as part of those permits, they may need to make improvements to M59, the intersection where Pleasant Valley is, as well as maybe improvements on Pleasant Valley. And if you recall from prior developments, this has been a hot topic, traffic. If you recall, the standard that this applicant is at is M59 and the intersection was Pleasant Valley. And oddly enough, it changes names as it proceeds north to Fenton Road. It's same road, but it just changes names. That intersection operates at a certain level of service. I don't know what that level of service is, but this applicant would be required to maintain that level of service with this proposed development. And he has to work that out with MDOT as well as County Road Commission.
Okay, and I think there was a question also, our comment made, I believe in there, about paving of Pleasant Valley Road. And township residents passed a road millage here recently and there are two projects that I'm aware of. It is not a planning commission thing. I would suggest you give the township manager a call. But Pleasant Valley is getting changed and paved and I will leave it at that, along with Bergen Road in the township. And I do not know what else is included there, but the paving of that road is here in the near future and not this construction season, but I know they're working on it. So if you have questions, I direct them to the township manager, unless, do you know? Any timetables? Sorry.
We talked about that, didn't we? It wasn't, I think Bergen's first and I think Pleasant Valley is second or third.
Okay.
Don't quote me because I don't have my stuff in front of me, but it won't be this year.
Right.
But it will be, it is closer.
I think it's '26 or '07 construction season without, do not hold that, me to that, but it's that soon, not 20 years, kind of a thing. And it is funded. Got that taken care of. Any other comments on traffic, roads? Okay. Vehicular circulation, I think that's been touched on here. We have the entrance on 59, the entrance on Pleasant Valley. We've got some internal roadwork network in there. So I'm moving over to page 12, fiscal impacts. They have provided a response on that May 21st date. Are there any comments on that? Okay, landscaping. Sue, would you just like to take a look at it and address where you'd like to discuss?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Not going to go through line by line either, but I'm going to just kind of hit the highlights that the planning department had questions on and make sure we're clear. One of that was just labeling the plan so we understood where lawn was versus different ground cover, you know, so that they began with like your entrance median island. They couldn't tell what the surface was going to be on the southern part of it. It shows two trees, but they're like, is it lawn, is it what? Because we asked that, you know, everything is covered as well as irrigated. Do you, do you know, did you get to see that, those comments about the labeling?
Yeah.
Did you, do you know the answers yet or are you going to get back to us?
I'll ask you back.
Okay. All right. The other question they had is, you know, we require that everything is irrigated. You're kind of proposing some natural areas, so sometimes it's contrary to wanting to irrigate everything. So the planning department said, you know, it's not labeled like the buffer areas and common areas. So we just want to know kind of what to expect. Because if it's not irrigated, then we want to make sure that the suitable materials are planted that can thrive. Okay?
I think that following this meeting, I'd like to, you know, engage my landscape architect to meet with planning.
Sure.
And make sure that we adequately represent in the plans what you're looking for.
Okay, all righty. Let's see here. Okay, talking about the south buffer, Troy, I don't know if you can show that. I know that you said you met with the Gieglers and looked at that south buffer to try to understand their farm operation and then, you know, your residence being right next to the, you know, 24/7 for four months. When I looked at the grading on the south buffer and your desire and your willingness to try to save all the large trees, there's an area right kind of where the cul-de-sac tips in, there are no trees there. There's scrub, there's a lot of vegetation. But if I read the grades right, the road is up about three feet higher than the property line because you're trying to meet the grades. So I'm curious if we can find out what kind of buffer would go in that gap, because now you're not having to work around the trees that you're preserving. And I see that it's just headlights just back and forth, being a good neighbor.
After, after meeting with our neighbors, I did go back and speak with our landscape architect and we're going to add a, some additional evergreen trees along that.
Was that discussed there? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And it gets selectively done because if you're trying to save trees, large ones, okay. But it does sound like you guys recognize that area?
We do.
Okay. All righty. You've got good instruction about your large detention pond, how you're going to try to bring it back with your seed mix and the maintenance was great to see. One comment on it, we have a lot of geese, in fact, in the field right now. And what the geese do is when you put down your seed, they're there for the feast. So what I've found in our profession is if you do, it's like a very thin straw erosion blanket over the seed, the geese can't get to the seed and then you're going to get your, your growth. But if you don't do it, you're just going to be, you know, doing your seed over and over again. So just a comment to your landscape architect to just consider that, because the rest written out look really, you know, maintenance, year one, year two, year three, trying to establish it. But I just had, we've had that problem with the geese.
Okay, understood.
Make sense?
Yes.
Just trying to make it thrive. Got, you know, this, which is wonderful, and we talked about this in the concept plan, that your street trees, met the number of street trees. You've got that nice wide area between the curb and the sidewalk and you put those trees in. But, and some of the corners, when we go around the corners, there's a sightline concern where you want to make sure when you're coming around a corner, you can see a car. But the trees are further back from the corners than they need to be. So, and, and your landscape architect kind of knows the rules, it's 25 feet on and on, but they're further back. And part of a traffic calming move is you bring the trees somewhat towards the corners just to slow people down.
Sure.
For safety, which you had talked about. So for your residents, if they could study that, you don't need more trees, it's just shifting them if we kind of get them a little closer. There was maybe like six or more instances of it, that I just feel it really makes a difference when you turn the corner and go in a wide, open, no tree street, you just tend to speed. So if we can just bring them closer, I think everybody wins, but still maintain the visibility. One more comment and I think I'm done talking. Thank you. All right. So also in the other site details, what you show is, you know, you guys are going to put that berm up there, up in the northeast corner to berm off whatever's coming on that corner, right? And you show your walkway along there also, which is great. So there's your trail, but you've got this straight engineered berm up and down and on the very top, you've got your two rows of evergreens. So it's not a naturalistic, I mean, it's just going to look like the berm, you know, with the trees and it's not got that natural look that you're trying to embrace here. So when your landscape architect looks at that, if you could, guys look at that, maybe you could add some canopy trees in there as well. It's going to just be very severe and not in keeping. You've met all the onus requirements, I'm just asking that it could be a better, you know, design. Right now, maybe what they've done is, here's, you know, here's the rules, here's what we're doing, later we'll get to it. I'm just asking that later you get to it. That's it.
Okay, any comments or questions on landscaping? Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
You're good. I am on page 14 now. I've got some other site details. Sue had just touched on that landscape berm. Troy, did you want to add anything else to it?
Yeah, I, there's this seven, I'll call it seven and a half acre piece at the actual corner of Pleasant Valley and M59 that is not included in this. The youngs have to step back in time in some of the prior plans. This was included in this project and this was shown as commercial. The property's been sold off, it's been split, it's under different ownership and MDOT has kind of mandated that this access drive be over here. This will be a future development at some point. I've had some discussions with the owners of this and I don't have a lot of details to share. And it's likely it could be commercial. But what the applicant has done here with this berm, it is, it's not typically this residential development that buffers from the commercial, it's the other way around. It is the commercial developments that typically have to provide a landscape buffer for the residential properties. So the applicant is kind of undertaking somewhat voluntarily to do a berm and landscape here. I think it's just important to note, it's not listed as a recognizable benefit, but this is something the applicant is truly voluntarily doing here on this. And remember, Grissom has pointed out, maybe they could change it or modify it, but this is just still a feature that the applicant is proposing that's not technically required.
And I think we brought that up back in the concept. We were kind of like, wow, why are you doing this? You know, so I remember that. But it's just, you know, I think it could be improved. It doesn't, it's not going to cost more money per se, it's just, you know.
You're saying just make the berm more undulating or whatever, not, not straight?
Even, or even how the trees, you know, I mean, they're just soldiers on the top of the peak.
Yeah.
You know, but this is nature here that you're trying to sell.
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation.
You know.
Work with our architect on that.
Just, yeah, just try to get that flavor that you're, you know, explaining that you're giving, but that is just going to be severe, you know? Now, you know, over time, maybe you'll be adding to it, but right now it's going to be severe and just be out of place.
Okay, understood.
Okay, perfect. Lighting, Troy, want to just touch on that?
Yeah, just briefly, again, when you're talking commercial projects and plan developments, we get into photometric plans, we have to see all the light fixtures, everything's got to be down shielded. When we get to single-family residential, we don't typically apply those type of standards. The applicant has proposed some street lights. I don't have the details on how tall they are. And then there'll probably be some lights on the homes. We typically don't regulate single-family homes and their exterior lights that they might have. So they are proposing some street lights. Typically, we don't regulate that, so, and just to give, just to let you know, there are proposed street lights, there might be lights on the exterior of the homes as well.
But they're not street lights lining the streets. There are only 10 or 12, is that right? Or are you having street lights line the streets?
We're not going to have street lights lined.
Oh, yeah. No, there are only.
I thought there was a.
There's only like 10, it's probably intersections and that type of a thing is my guess, is all they're doing.
Yeah, it says, it states 10 street lights.
Yeah, so I think they're just lighting intersections.
Okay. Yeah, so there was a diagram showing what it looked like, but.
Yes.
They're just doing it at the intersections.
Yep. Okay.
Is there a plan showing those, Troy, that we could just toggle to and maybe clarify that for?
Is it just at your intersections, you're doing those?
Yes.
So at this intersection here?
I believe it's, I believe the.
Probably the entrance.
Yeah, I don't know if they're detailed on the plans yet, but again, it's going to be at the entrance of intersections, just as.
Well, 10 isn't going to cover the neighborhood. They'd need 100.
You know, the stop signs, street signs.
Okay. So, so it would just primarily be at these intersections?
Yes.
Yeah, and the entrance.
And the entrance. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So there's eight or nine intersections there plus the points.
Good with that, Tom?
Yep.
That work for you?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else? Architectural building materials, I think it was addressed earlier when the pictures were shown, they're going to vary the fronts and some of the materials, some of the colors. Everybody good with all of that?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got some other letters from other agencies and that type of a thing. I'm sure you guys have received them. So I guess now, do we have any questions or comments from anybody on the commission to Troy or the applicant?
I wouldn't mind touching on, can I ask you what was covered in that conversation when you met with your neighbors, especially specifically Giegler Farms? Like, are you taking any precautions to, for the noise reduction or anything like that? What were their concerns and your concerns?
So the, you know, they, you know, just wanted to remind me, because again, they brought this up when we, when we heard the concept plan back in, back in the fall, that, and that was right during the, the, it was either right during or just before the harvest season. So they just wanted to remind us that for a few months out of the year, that their heaters are running 24 hours a day. And that's just something that we need to be mindful of. You know, I don't think that the additional evergreen trees that we'll park, that we'll be planting along the south property line will do much of a buffer to stop that noise, but maybe it helps a little bit, but I think it's just going to be, the onus is going to be on us to make sure that our homeowners in the neighborhood understand that there are operations that are happening adjacent to us.
Do you work with a sales center model?
We do.
All right. I'm sure your marketing people are going to come up with something like a nice big aerial that shows a farm field with a tractor behind there, maybe a couple gravel haulers on Pleasant Valley.
Absolutely.
Along with wonderful country living in Heartland.
Yeah, we, we. Yeah, we have a, we have a disclosure statement that's included with every purchase agreement. And it's going to be very important for us not only to hide that into the disclosure statement, but to make sure that we talk to all of our homeowners about that. We also understand that, you know, sometimes there's short memories. They're going to get living in their home and there might still be issues. They typically start in our office, look at our sales office if they have concerns. Again, we'll be armed and prepared with, with how to answer that. They may come here to the municipality if there's indeed an issue, but we, we try to do our best to educate our future homeowners well in advance of them living in the home. And then when they have concerns, we, we do our best to re-educate them if we need to.
Is there any volume discussion, decibels or anything like that? Like, how loud is this equipment?
You know, I can't, you know, I can't speak that loud or, you know, what the...
Have you considered upgrading building materials for those homes that are closer to that? Extra sound insulation?
No, we, we haven't.
Hanging windows?
No.
And just have concerns that the homeowner's not aware that this, of this sound issue, then they move in and then they, they're not happy, and then they come to the township and ask what we can do about this if we can limit their hours of production. And that's the last thing we want to do because they've been existing there for decades.
Yeah, I think that, you know, this is, this is a, you know, a known, you know, a known situation in the neighborhood, not unlike, you know, you know, an airport or a train or something else that, you know, could be adjacent to a community. We know that there's a gravel operation that's going to be there for a number of years from now. We know that we have nice neighbors to the south that have a farming operation.
Yeah, but up until the last meeting we had, I had no idea that farming was a 24-hour production.
Right.
So I think a lot of people could see themselves living next to a farm and going, wow, nice and peaceful. And then a month later, they move in and here's a dryer going 24/7 and they can't sleep. Then what? I just, I have concerns about that. So I was hoping that maybe you could voluntarily upgrade the building materials to avoid some of that or find out how high these noise levels are and, and the resistance levels of the house that you put up that is near that, whether those people would be affected.
Well, we can, you know, I can work to better understand the, you know, the decibel level. You know, however, you know, I guess, you know, where do you stop? You know, at which, at which home site do you stop? And I think that, you know, we have nice windows that we include. We have adequate insulation in the side walls that, you know, that, you know, that meets code.
So in, in multifamily housing, there's, there's wall assemblies that put STC ratings, sound transmission ratings on them. And they have to meet certain resistance to sound. When you're doing multifamily, where, for example, in apartments or condos, where two units above each other, there's certain requirements there. So there's obviously building products out there that can be used to cut down on noise transmission. So not knowing how loud this equipment is, I guess that would be the number one thing to find out and then find out the STC rating of your walls and windows and see if that's going to be sufficient or not.
You could also take that in comparison to the road noise of M59.
Yes, that's a good point.
Which at some point today is pretty dang loud.
Yeah. So if this farm equipment was equivalent to the noise coming off of 59, I don't think it's a huge concern. But if it's louder than that, then I think you're going to have some, some issues.
Well, you know, we are very well aware of, you know, the, you know, the existing conditions there at the community. We are happy to invest in this development here in the corner. We'll, we'll look into the decibel rate that's coming off the farm. And if we think that it's going to have issues for future homeowners, we'll look at the possibility of making some adjustments. But I can't necessarily commit to that today. But I can tell you that I hear your concerns and I'll do some additional checking into the background.
In the end, we just don't want any unhappy homeowners.
Even a week.
Especially if they're investment like that, end up coming and knocking on the door here and saying, what can you do for us? And then Giggler has to pay the price by reducing their hours or something like that when they shouldn't have.
Happy homeowners are important to us and I'm sure they're...
They've been here longer than half the town has been here, so.
Happy homeowners are important to us and I'm sure they're happy, I'm sure they're very important to the municipality as well, so.
Maybe if I help explain, you know, a hypothetical complaint. Somebody complains about the farming operation next door and it comes to the township, it's likely to come to our office. And maybe if I just explain how we're likely to handle that, it might help. If we got a complaint over their combines with lights and dust and noise from harvesting or their dryers were loud, it is highly likely we would not do anything on that. That that is a farming operation protected under the Michigan Right to Farm Act, and we would have no authority to do, to change their hours of operation as long as they were operating within what's called the generally accepted agricultural management practices. If they decide to do auto body repair on the property and the painting of the cars or something that's not at all related to farming, then we might get involved and say, what's going on over here? And this is causing a nuisance to your neighboring. But any activity that they're doing that is truly related to the farm or the farm operation that would fall within what's called a GAMP, a generally accepted agricultural management practice, we would have little to no authority to alter it, change it, or interfere with that operation, if that helps. Those neighbors would unfortunately be stuck with living with it or deciding to move if they couldn't handle it. I don't know how they would handle the complaint, but I'm trying to address how the township might address those complaints.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on that topic? You got any, any more comments?
There is, yes. So I, imagine that. So I hate to go back so far, but Troy, if you can go back to page nine, and it has to do with Mike, Mike's subject or topic on the distance between buildings or, you know, homes or garages for that example. If we go down to number five...
Mike, I'm not sure what page.
Oh, I'm sorry, page nine. Page nine, I'm sorry.
Packet page 21.
Packet page 21.
Yep, page nine of the memo. Packet page 21.
Just a staff memo?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You just want to look at the...
Oh, yeah, no, if we can just, yeah, can we, just so we can all look at it, it might just be easier if I'll...
Sure. Let me pull that up. Packet.
21, the lower right corner.
Zoom in here a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, so, yep, to the left a little bit, so up to item five. So can you help me, Mr. Stroff, understand what is actually the building envelope? What is the, so the second paragraph down, the typical lot detail drawing shows the building envelope.
So, so the building, so the building envelope for these lots, the, the average lot width is 60 feet. So the building envelope would be 50 feet.
Five each.
Five feet on each, on each side of, from, from the lot line.
And so to go a little further with that, is that from wall, from wall of house A to wall of house B if they were side by side, or soffit overhang and let's say gutter face to face? Does the, I've always had this question, is the building envelope just the walls or is it the whole building itself, including the fascia gutter?
Well, that depends on the municipal ordinance. And I'm not, you know, I should be familiar with that here for Heartland Township, but I don't know if the ordinance is from wall to wall or if it's from any, any overhangs or encroachments into the soffit.
I don't know that because it's not a planning thing, but...
I do know that.
Okay. Good.
So the setback, these are the setbacks here that are listed in the staff report. 25-foot front, 5-foot side, 20-foot rear. That would go to the, the wall of the building. The overhang is permitted to encroach 18 inches into that setback.
But if they have a, if they have a building envelope, as he described, a lot of 60 feet, a building envelope of 50, if the house is 40, they can build it anywhere within that 50-foot envelope. The envelope allows them to build the home within that envelope. The house doesn't mean, doesn't mean the house is going to be five and five, because the house may not be that wide with the garage.
But if the house does grow to be that wide, it's, it could be up to 18 inches over...
The roof overhang.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just picturing, and we've all driven through neighborhoods where the houses are really close together and we're like, look how close those are together. And my question was, and it's not yours, but thank you for letting us know that it's really something probably I should know, wall to wall, but then it could be 18 inches per building, actually closer. Yeah. So up to three feet, so it could be as close as seven feet.
You're talking measuring to the roof overhang?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. That was, that was my only question. So, yeah, I was just, it was an opportunity to learn that. And I don't know, maybe I'm the only one with that question, that kind of drill-in-down detail.
Anybody else have that question?
Want to help me?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If you are so inclined, locate it on page one of the staff review memo dated June 5th, you will find a motion, if you are inclined.
I'll move to recommend approval of site plan, PD 25-004, the preliminary plan development site plan for Sawyer Bridge Plan Development, as outlined in the staff memorandum dated June 5th, 2025. I guess with the additional understanding that the applicant does not need to come back for a revised preliminary plan if some of the lots are eliminated for increase in retention pond, provided that there are no changes in the walkways or roads. Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Ekman, second from Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you. Good luck at the next step.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. Forever. Thank you so much. Oh, yeah. It might be more. We still have a little bit of a meeting to get done here, so we have item eight, call to the public. Anybody else wish to make any comments? Come on up.
I live on Fenton Road. Used to be 4450, now it's 13038 Deer Track Lane. I'd like to ask the planning commission to be certain when they consider these kinds of new quote improvements to the community, what is the advantage to me, a resident of Heartland Township? How will this benefit my quality of life? It's very easy to pick up the negatives. Heavy traffic, poor emergency response, schools are going to be more impacted, the library is going to be impacted. If I were a stockholder in the housing development, I could understand there'd be a lot of benefits for me. But I'm not. And I don't believe there's many people in Heartland Township that are stockholders in this or any other proposed development. So please consider the quality of life for all of Heartland Township when you look at some of the suggested improvements or developments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close call to the public. Troy, plan our report. Anything this evening?
Just a update. The ordinance review committee is underway, looking at ordinance amendment raised by a resident that had, had some concerns with our ordinance regulations on poultry in the township. And we have just started exploring that at the discretion of the planning commission. So we'll keep you posted as we move through that.
Okay. Committee reports, comments, anyone? A motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Support.
Mitchell and Murphy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.
I think I've asked that question.
I don't know. I thought of...